All right. All right, good morning. I will now call to order the Monday, April 21st, 2025 regular Town Council meeting. If you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First on the agenda, we have swearing in of police officers, and we have Mayor Stare and Chief Spears here this morning.
This is always a good way to start the meeting, so I'm going to ask, first of all, Matthew Dieter to come up, please.
Matthew Dieter, officer, there we are. He has no badge, just a little, just a second. Ask you to please read your name, repeat after me.
I, Matthew Dieter.
I, Matthew Dieter.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the ordinances of the town of Zionsville, Indiana.
And the ordinances of the town of Zionsville, Indiana.
I will follow the rules and regulations.
I will follow the rules and regulations.
Of the Zionsville Police Department.
Of the Zionsville Police Department.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Without malice or prejudice.
Without malice or prejudice.
Discharge all my official duties as police officer.
Discharge all my official duties as police officer.
In the town of Zionsville, Indiana.
In the town of Zionsville, Indiana.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, the next person I'll ask to up is Olin Leising. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Olin Leising.
I, Olin Leising.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the ordinances of the town of Zionsville, Indiana.
And the ordinances of the town of Zionsville, Indiana.
I will follow the rules and regulations.
I will follow the rules and regulations.
Of the Zionsville Police Department.
Of the Zionsville Police Department.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Without malice or prejudice.
Without malice or prejudice.
Discharge all my official duties.
We'll discharge all my official duties.
As police officer.
As police officer.
For the town of Zionsville, Indiana.
For the town of Zionsville, Indiana.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Last but not least, we have Evan Rice.
Congratulations.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Evan Rice.
I, Evan Rice.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the ordinances of the town of Zionsville, Indiana.
And the ordinance of the town of Zionsville, Indiana.
I will follow the rules and regulations.
I will follow the rules and regulations.
Of the Zionsville Police Department.
Of the Zionsville Police Department.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Without malice or prejudice.
Without malice or prejudice.
Discharge all my official duties as a police officer.
Discharge all my duties as a police officer.
For the town of Zionsville, Indiana.
For the town of Zionsville, Indiana.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
As the mayor said, it's always fun to start meetings like that, and certainly appreciate everybody coming out and support. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, so if you'd like, I can pause, and you guys can go take pictures, and talk, and hang out, and do whatever you want to. Yeah, go ahead. Thanks for coming. All right. As we move along here, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the March 17th, 2025 Town Council Meeting Memoranda. A copy's been posted. Are there questions from councilors? Otherwise, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
A second from Counselor Melton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed at seven, in favor, zero opposed. Up next is the approval of the March 24th, 2025 Town Council Executive Session. A copy of that's been posted as well. Any questions from councilors? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Vice President Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed at seven, in favor, zero opposed. Up next is the approval of the March payroll claims. Are there any questions from councilors? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
We approve.
First from Counselor McIlary.
Second.
Second from, was that Counselor Melton?
Stein.
Counselor Stein. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed at seven, in favor, zero opposed. Up next is the approval of the April 21st, 2025 claims. Are there any questions from councilors? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
We approve.
First from Vice President Burke.
Second.
Second from Counselor Sampson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed at seven, in favor, zero opposed. Up next is a request to speak on agenda item. Amy, do we have any requests to speak?
No, we do not.
All right. So up next on our agenda will be a special presentation. We have a couple of presentations here. We will have a Town Council proclamation regarding Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Month. With us this morning, we have the Director of the Indiana Department of Child Services, Adam Krupp, as well as the Executive Director of Boone County Mentoring Partnership, and the President of Prevent Child Abuse Boone County, Matt Wilson. So if either one of you guys would like to come up, it'd be great to hear from you. Thank you.
They want me to go first?
[laughing]
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, good morning. Members of the community, thank you for being here. My name is Adam Krupp, and as Director of Indiana's Department of Child Services, that's my son, since January, appointed by Governor Braun, but also importantly, I am a proud Zionsville resident. I'm grateful the opportunity to address you guys this morning. So, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month around the country. Really, it should be every month, and it should be every day, but the nice thing about highlighting April is that there are events happening all throughout the state. I was in my hometown, where I grew up, in Plymouth, Marshall County, about a week or two ago, and they were planting pinwheels all around the community. The mayor was reading a proclamation, and it was just a full community support. People larger than this audience gathered around to raise awareness for child abuse prevention, and it was a beautiful thing to see. So I will say that here in Zionsville, of course, we cherish our tight-knit community, our amazing schools, and our safe neighborhoods, but even here, child abuse and neglect can, and unfortunately does happen, right? We aggregate data, and we post data publicly on our dashboard at the Department of Child Services on a county level, right, for certain reasons. So when we look at Boone County, we see anywhere from 65 to 75 active cases of children in need of services, right, because there's been substantiations of potential abuse and neglect. What I will say to this audience here, because we're in Zionsville, do not think, because we are such a beautiful, wonderful community that cherishes those things, that it doesn't happen in our backyard. Okay, I've seen it, right? I'll be the one to tell you personally. So, please don't think, when you hear abuse and neglect Boone County, that it's probably not Zionsville, because we're Zionsville. Please don't ever get complacent and think that, because it can happen anywhere. Every case is one too many, so as your neighbor, I know that we all share a common goal of making sure that every child in our town grows up safe, loved, and supported. Child Abuse Prevention Month just reminds us that prevention starts with the community. So we have our community here, and at the Department of Child Services, under the new administration, we are working tirelessly to work with families, to strengthen them for early intervention, expand our foster care support, and collaborate with local organizations, but as everybody knows, and DCS knows, we can't do it alone. And so here in Zionsville, we have incredible resources, as all of you know. Together, we just need to rally together to support strengthening families and protecting our kids. I gave a speech at the Child Abuse Prevention Month kickoff at the State House in the first week of April, and I said that the best defense for child abuse and neglect is a strong family. I think we know that Zionsville has some incredibly strong families, but prevention requires that we not get complacent. So I'm wearing a blue pinwheel on my lapel today. I hope that all of you know, at least if you didn't before today, that you do moving forward, that the blue pinwheel is a national symbol for child abuse prevention, and the blue pinwheel is to represent the joy, playfulness, and carefree childhood that we want all children to have, so that all of our children in our communities can thrive. So I see many, if not all of you, are wearing some shade of blue this morning, so thank you for doing that. Again, my name's Adam Krupp, proud Zionsville resident. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, council. I am Matt Wilson. I am the Executive Director of Boone County Mentoring Partnership and President of Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Month, or Prevent Child Abuse Boone County, sorry. I don't know that I can say much, anything much more than what Adam has shared, and I appreciate his willingness to step into the role as Director of DCS and helping us continue throughout the state of making Indiana a better and safer place for all young people. I would like to recognize just a couple people also here who are, who have been big proponents and advocates for young people. Brian Stevenson, Major Brian Stevens with the Sheriff's Office, he is, he's gonna beat me up later, but for even mentioning him, but he's on our Prevent Child Abuse Team for the county. Jamie Van Gorder, he is on the board at Sylvia's Child Advocacy Center, and Amanda Rubek is on my board at Boone County Mentoring Partnership. And on behalf of Prevent Child Abuse Boone County, I would like to thank the town of Zionsville for joining many other towns and cities and states throughout the country by recognizing this month as Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Month. As President of Prevent Child Abuse Boone County and Executive Director of BCMP, I appreciate your willingness to take this step in responding to not only preventing child abuse and neglect, but promoting proactive and pro-social ways to do so. Through collaboration and joint efforts personally and collectively with our communities, local governments, nonprofit organizations, businesses, schools, and families, we will be able to empower our young people and ensure that they have a safe and supportive community to grow in. So I thank you for taking this moment and this month to be very intentional in recognizing this month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Adam, I appreciate, you know, Matt reached out in early February, and, or late February, I should say, and we immediately responded, and were supportive and wanted to do this, and just unfortunately, with the way our meetings lined up, having a mid-month meeting, you know, we weren't able to kick off the month, but appreciate, appreciate your reaching out and giving us all this opportunity. So, councilor, you'll notice that there is not a vote for this, but we do have a proclamation, and if you bear with me here for a second, I'll go ahead and read through that. Whereas the town of Zionsville, Boone County, Indiana, believes that all children should be able to grow up in a safe environment in the town of Zionsville and across the state, and whereas Prevent Child Abuse Boone County works to increase awareness of the problem of child abuse and seeks to inform communities about solutions serving as a valuable resource for families, individuals, and organizations, as well as advocating for expanded and improved programs and policies to prevent child maltreatment. And whereas the Indiana Department of Child Services reported that there were a total of 56 children deaths in the state of Indiana as a result of abuse and/or neglect in 2023, and whereas child abuse and neglect are preventable, and the town of Zionsville, or the Town Council believes that it is critical to bring awareness to the community and to teach children, parents, caregivers, and educators how to report and respond to these crimes. And whereas the community, all community members must play a role in ensuring that families have the resources they need to provide for the safety and support of their children, and whereas the Town Council commends the efforts driven by Prevent Child Abuse Boone County in educating and informing Hoosiers about the importance of preventing the pain of child abuse and neglect, and whereas the month of April is nationally known as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the Town Council has determined it is important to recognize the growing threat of child abuse and works towards preventing abuse and giving survivors the resources they need to heal and thrive. Now therefore, the Town Council of the town of Zionsville, Indiana, proclaims that April will be recognized as Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Month, and we ask all citizens to join in this observation. We will, we will have, I will sign this, the Town Council will sign this, and we will certainly offer that to you guys as well, so thank you very much. All right. Up next on the agenda, we have another special presentation with Fire Chief Jamie Van Gorder and John Stare. Mayor Stare.
So some of you may have heard of this by now. This is, this is really kind of a big deal. The Zionsville Fire Department won a worldwide EMS competition last week, a major competition from the Fire Department Instructors Conference in downtown Indianapolis. It's competition that's based on the best uses for the latest modern technology, and it included EMS teams from around the world, including places as far away as Australia and Abu Dhabi, and a number came in from Europe, too. Our team has come close. The past two years, we came in second place, but this year, we finally got over the top. We've never won before this month. And the team members include those you see on the screen right there, Brian Blazak, Ray Klein, Dooley Abamislimo, and Jeremy Anker, and I think Ray is in the audience today, so Ray, why don't you stand up and take a round of applause? Now, this is something I think we've known in Zionsville, but it confirms that we are fortunate to have some of the best EMS crews in the world, and all these guys deserve, you know, really, the round of applause that Ray just got, they deserve that every day for the work they do. And do you want to say anything about this?
Go ahead.
You're good? Okay. But it's a big deal, and we're proud of them for doing that. And then shortly after that competition took place, I know at least one of them, Jeremy, moved over to the 9/11 memorial stair climb, which is something that's part of the FDIC each year, and they were joined by Counselor Norris, by the way. This is not a competition, but it is a way to remember the New York firefighters who died on 9/11, 2001, in the attacks on the World Trade Center, and it's a grueling climb. What they do is they start on the field at Lucas Oil Stadium, they walk all the way up to the 600 level, sometimes in full gear, and then they go up and down every set of steps in the top tier, and then they come back down to the field level once again. It is a remarkable accomplishment to do that, particularly when you're not trained in it as Counselor Norris. He was here a few days after that and couldn't walk down the steps when he left, he had to take the elevator.
He's not joking. I couldn't walk.
I'm not joking, and all the money raised goes to support the New York Fire Department's Counseling Services Unit. So for those who are here today who took part in that grueling climb, we should stand up and accept a round of applause from us. Thank you, and thank you not only for the way you performed and the way you made us proud at the FDIC, but for really what you do every day, every day of the week, 24 hours a day, including the weekends, 24/7, so we appreciate that very much. Now moving on, councilor, councilors and President Plunkett, if it's okay, I'll move on with the administration update. Just have a couple of quick notes here. The first of which is the Comprehensive Plan, which is moving forward, still on target to wrap up by late summer or early fall. Information from two public meetings this month, we had one on April 9th and one on April 15th, will be considered. The subcommittees will meet again, and the Steering Committee will meet again. HWC is working on trying to put together a meeting, a joint meeting between the Town Council and the Plan Commission, which would be open to the public and carried online. So that is something that they're working on right now, all heading toward the goal of presenting the Comprehensive Plan to the Plan Commission in August and the Town Council after that. But in the meantime, people have asked, you know, where they can provide input and where they can put in. There is an opportunity to do that on our, on the website right there, it's on the screen, uniquelyzionsville.com. You can follow this link to send comments by email. All those emails are collated, and it really is the best way to engage in the process at this point. Your voice will be heard if you choose to go on the website and make a comment. The next item I have is the village restrooms. They're open and functional in the parking lot just south of the Friendly Tavern, and I know it may look like, we just kind of drove this in there and plopped it down, and that's it, but it really took the work of many departments. DPW and Parks worked on the design, and they will service these restrooms going forward. IT had to establish safety protocols to go around it, the Fire Department inspections, and then proper permitting from the Planning Department, too. So pretty much everybody in this building has touched this process, and it might look a little bit stark to some people right now, but there is going to be some landscaping that's going to go around it, and I think it'll be something that'll serve the public well. Certainly has been a long time in coming, and it'll serve, serve the town well. The next item that I have is the 2024 Year-End Financial Report. It is finalized, you have a memo in your packet. It was uploaded to Gateway on February 25th, which was several days ahead of the March 1st deadline, and just a couple of highlights that I think are important for people to know, that all of our accounts are reconciled, our reporting to the state is fully up to date, and the credit rating agency Standard and Poor's has removed the negative outlook from our finances. So it's all very good, we're on track, and I, and I want everybody to know that our accounting department, our finance department is doing a great job in keeping us where we need to be. The next item that I have is the State Legislature. The legislative session will end on April 29th, but it has already passed Senate Bill 1, and that has been signed by the governor, and that will provide property tax reform, but at the same time, it will affect the revenue that all municipalities get, including Zionsville. So under the current projections from the Department of Local Government Finance, it appears that our revenue growth will slow by $1.35 million in 2026, $1.82 million in 2027, and $2.44 million in 2028. The cumulative impact will be $5.62 million. Also, we are no longer eligible for the excess levy growth appeals. So we are now working with CROW on our five-year budget projections for 2026 through 2030, and I just want you to know that we're confident we're going to come up with a workable plan. Working together, we'll be able to find our way through this. We will work with the revenue we have available, and we will still be able to provide the level of service to which our constituents have come to expect. And I want to state publicly and state it very clearly, and I, and I believe that everybody on this Town Council would agree, that the number-one commitment to me is that we will not allow public safety to be compromised in this process. not allow public safety to be compromised in this process in any way. And that's a commitment that, that I know we all have, and that's a commitment we will carry forward as we, as we go through what, you know, is going to be a bit of a challenge in the next few years. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would echo the mayor's sentiments regarding the comprehensive plan. If there's anyone in the public who wants to make sure they have input, please, please go to uniquelyzionsville.com and participate in that exercise. Up next is the first item of old business, is the consideration and ordinance authorizing bonds. This is a final reading, this is ordinance 2025-09. This is for the Holiday Farms Project. We have the petitioners in the room with council. If there are questions, otherwise, as I mentioned, this is the second reading. We've heard this before, so. Any questions from counselors? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve on final reading ordinance number 2025-09.
Second. I got a first from Councilor Norris, a second from Vice President Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, a seven in favor, zero opposed. Thank you very much. Up next is a consideration of an ordinance establishing a donation fund for the town of Zionsville Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. This is ordinance 2025-10. Again, second reading, final reading. We have Deputy Mayor Hage here to talk through this, if there are any questions. If there are no questions, I would make a motion to approve on final reading.
Second.
I have a second from Counselor Melton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, a seven in favor, zero opposed. Up next is a consideration of an encroachment appeal. This is the Oakley Terrace Appeal. We have DPW Director Lance Lance, or someone from Lance's department here that can also offer, and the petitioner David Wilt to go through the petition.
Mr. Su Song.
Yeah, either one. I don't know, David, I don't know if you want to start or...
Whatever. You're welcome.
I'm, I'm also happy to introduce this, too. So we've made it, we've made a change to the way that the public files appeals. And the process is for residents to contact their local representative. In this particular case, Mr. Wilt's in my district. He shared with me his desire, as you guys saw in the packet, with the memo that he provided, just simply to provide some privacy with some, with some trees. And after speaking with DPW Director Lance Lance, he found no problem with that. This particular, this particular area is somewhat unique in the way that the neighborhood was set up and established before, you know, some of the landscaping was put in. So with that being said, I guess I'll, I'll let you kind of take it from there.
You've answered my question. Thank you for the opportunity. It was simply to plant some trees between this driveway and a sidewalk in the Hampshire neighborhood on the north end, and it is in a drainage use and sewer easement area. However, it doesn't seem, based on the way the landscape is set up, that it should encroach too much on any drainage. And if this is also one of those things where, prior to the neighborhood being built, that there was a different protocol than here, here we stand. But I appreciate it. I don't have much else to say unless there's any questions.
Do you need to state his address and name? Or is that...
The address. Yeah, this is it, for 4679 Oakley Terrace in the Hampshire neighborhood in Zionsville.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
For me, when Lance speaks for his department and says that this falls into an okay area for him, it immediately puts me at ease. And I like to look at the property rights of an owner, and if it, those two things match, it sounds good to me.
And I'll just add, thank you for doing it the right way. Thank you for going through the process. Thank you for asking the right questions. Thank you for getting DPW involved. There are a lot of folks in our community that will plant a tree just because they think it's on their property and they should be able to, and this is the right way to do it. So thank you for following the protocol.
Any other questions from councilor? Would you like to offer anything or...
I have a question for Mr. Su Song, if you don't mind. I know, I know Lance isn't here, but I was just curious, you know, this, this established a drainage utility and sanitary easement previously, and then there was a five-in, I'm sorry, additional five-foot drainage utility. That, I haven't ever seen that before, and you know, as a contractor myself, I've, I've seen a lot of different things happening. Is, is it in our, is this, is there something we need to change moving forward from a planning standpoint to kind of prevent some of this happening? And, and that's my first question, and then my secondary question is, you know, my understanding is that once you have a utility, I'm sorry, the easement, does, does the actual pipe in the ground, is that usually at the center of an easement? Because this one's just kind of unique, too. I've never really seen a diagonal pipe. I'm sure they, they exist that a way, but I just, I've never seen that. So I was just curious, what your, what, is there any findings about change? And then is this a typical scenario?
First of all, good morning. Michael Su Song, Stormwater Division. You ask good questions here. It's like, well, the first is that what procedurally possibly could be done differently in the future going forward? It's very unique because it's, you had the trail in there, and that trail strip, and then on one side's an easement, on the other side's the easement as well. So the engineers that designed the subdivision will typically plat all these things out and design the pipes as such. Because of the pathway, they use that as the center to set the pipe in. And even though it was in a diagonal, and we've seen, you can see, there are places within easements, they'll put it as a diagonal in an easement, just so that the, when you have easements on your platted lot next to, and next to actually the, the easement, it's not at a diagonal, and then your house would have to be adjusted accordingly. You know what I mean by that? So it's something that we'll look at as we go forward, but this is definitely an oddball situation. It's unique. And then on your follow-up question about, was it, are those the two, were those the two questions you had, or what was the other one?
The five-foot, the additional utility. And I, I know that you, you didn't, we didn't do this as a town, however, at some point we approved it. So I was just curious, you know, I, I've never seen that. I've never seen an additional easement alongside, so just, just curious, and if, if that's something that we, in the planning stages, we need to kind of red flag or, or better understand why it's existing.
Yeah. I think the trail in there was the, probably the, the thing that made it an odd duck. Normally, it would just be utility strip for that stormpipe in the back.
Fantastic. Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you commenting on that. It helps as we move forward, both in the planning phases of, of developments, but also if we have these come forward. As you remember, we, we had a similar situation at the previous meeting, a couple meetings ago. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much for that information.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, to your point, Counselor Melton, you know, this particular development was approved in concept in 2006, right? So it, we're, we're kind of inheriting some of these unique situations. So, but I too, you know, appreciate Mr. Wilt's approach and, and how we ended up ultimately getting here, so. Are there any questions from counselors? So this is, this is not, excuse me, this is not an ordinance, it's not a resolution, this is just a thumbs up or thumbs down. So if there's no questions from counselors, I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
A second from Counselor Melton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, a seven in favor, zero opposed. Thank you.
Plant your vote, Bertum.
Up next on the agenda is a consideration of a resolution expressing interest in the purchase of certain properties valued at over $25,000. This is Resolution 2025-09. We have Fire Chief Van Gorder here with us today. I would point out before Chief Van Gorder gets up here that this is a resolution that only requires one vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, for your time this morning. As you're well aware, the Zionsville Fire Department's been working its way through a fire station feasibility plan for the better part of the past eight months. And as we're reaching the conclusion of developing, excuse me, the final plan, it's become very apparent that land acquisition is critically important to the long-term success of future public safety planning for our community. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. In these areas where we believe we're going to need public safety facilities, the land is quickly being purchased by developers or individuals that wish, wish to develop them into projects or ideas or homes for themselves. So to that end, based on the recommendations, we've reviewed multiple options in various locations throughout our community to locate the most optimal area to deliver timely, professional fire department services. Previous efforts by the fire department to acquire property in the area of 875 East and 400 South were a good decision and provide locations for public safety services in the future. However, in other areas of our community, the town does not currently own property, and there is a need to acquire property in eastern and westernmost portions of our service area to ensure we are able to deliver these essential services. Our consultants have encouraged the town to move forward to secure property in these areas before they are developed and unavailable. After careful analysis with our consultant, Wolpert, we've identified these two separate locations and come before you to ask your approval in this ordinance to allow us to continual our discussions with these property owners. This does not lock the town into purchasing these properties, it just allows us to continue to have conversation with these individuals, to see if we can reach an agreement at the cost, work with the mayor and his administration to identify how they may be funded, and then come back to the council and move forward. But per state law, anytime that we're looking at acquiring property in excess of $25,000, it does require us to do this public discussion and then have the council consider a resolution. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Any questions from counselors? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-09.
Second.
I have a first from Counselor Norris, a second from Counselor Sampson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, a seven in favor, zero opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last item on the agenda for new business is consideration of ordinance establishing the reserve at Union Williams Planed Unit Development. This petition, 2024-50-Z, ordinance 2025-11. The town council will hear this matter on Monday, May 5th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Zionsville Town Council chambers here at Town Hall. No presentation by the petitioner will be provided at this meeting, no public testimony will be allowed during this meeting, presentation by the petitioner, and public testimony will be allowed at the May 5th, 2025 meetings. Any other questions from counselors, any other matters? Otherwise, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second for Vice President Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed, a seven in favor, zero opposed. The next regular town council meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 5th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Zionsville Town Hall Council Chambers. Final notice will be posted in compliance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Thank you.